And I was saying to a few parents, we were just, we were checking in. Just a little explanation and particularly for the students, what we're doing here tonight. I think for us as the adults, anytime you say we'd like to acknowledge your child, we're there, right? We enjoy that. We like to see our children succeed, thrive and do incredible things. But this is as much for you as it is for anything. It is so important when a community takes a pause and recognizes excellence. And there's sometimes, I think, a mistake that you can make when you go to a high school district like this or really any of these public high schools in the Chicagoland area, really in the country, nothing like them exists. And you can think because you're on women's bowling and you've been here before, you're on cheer, you've been here before, boys bowling coming in, women's wrestling, Justin Wardlaw here, and I could go on and on and on. You might think, you know, this happens every year and I get this medal and ho hum. But I would really recommend to the students, don't ho hum it at all. And you might have placed last year and you placed again this year. But I would respectfully say to you, many, 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 many athletes in the state of Illinois, thousands compete every year, most don't even get to go to the state meet. This athlete, pretty good runner, never qualified for the state meet when I was in high school here in Illinois. It was too competitive. It was just too, too competitive. And I hope that you fully realize what a competitive state you are in, to not even just go to the state meet. But you were under pressure. And I think about each of your sports, and there's a different pressure in each of the sports that could go on and on and on and bore you to death. But I've seen all of you perform and you've had grace under pressure. And on the outside of that, you came through with excellence, you were composed, you were outstanding. Some of you had to come from behind. That's the toughest thing to do in sports. Some of you, you only had X amount of minutes and that was it. You didn't get to, you know, another quarter, a second half. You had to, you had to hit it now and it had to happen right now. Some of you, it was six minutes or nothing for you and that was it. And it's worth reflecting on what you did in that moment and who you were. The other reason why we come together, the school board represents the community, your parents, grandparents, people who raised you up, your first teachers, they're here. They had so much to do with your composure and your grace. So our union president, Katie Kishline, always says, none of this happened without our teachers, our coaches, our sponsors. It's just a time tonight before I turn it over to President Lopez Caneva to acknowledge all of that. Sometimes if we don't stop and actually memorialize it, we forget to really take it deep, deep, deep into our hearts and really say, this thing happened, this excellence happened and it just didn't happen by accident. It happened through skillful coaching, compassionate adult leadership, parents who are willing to drive you around and take care of you and get you to practice and pay for things that enhanced your athletic career. It happened because you were brave and you were courageous. And even though you might have gotten knocked down at some point in this competition, you got right back up. That's one of the hardest things to do in life, believe me. And that's why we do competition. So on behalf of the board, we're so proud that you're here tonight. We'll be calling you up individually. We have a board meeting that we've got to reopen, open session to make this an official board meeting. We'll even vote on your resolutions. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to President Lopez Caneva to get this regular session kicked off. Could you give President Lopez Caneva a big round of applause? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the board, congratulations to all these students here and all these athletes. All right. Do I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting? All right. It's been motioned by Dr. Shawn, second by Mr. Thies. Roll call. Can do the roll call. Mr. Travis, Dr. Simone Rogers, Ms. Luanne Johnson, Mr. Thies, Dr. Veronica Shaw, Mr. Zion Navarro, and Ms. Lopez Caneva here. All right. It is. Okay. We will start with our pledge allegiance and if everyone can stand. And if we can all join, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will turn this over then to our, oh, Mr. John Greenham. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lopez Caneva, and welcome to our cafeteria here this evening at East Campus. My name is John Green and principal. At this time, I want to introduce our athletic director, Mr. Mike Dwyer. And before Mr. Dwyer comes up here, as Dr. McBride had mentioned, the importance of this night for our students, for our parents, definitely mentioned the impact that our staff and coaches have on our student athletes. And I also want to make sure to give a shout out to Mr. Dwyer because all of his hard work to lead our ever growing athletic department, especially in a challenging year this year, particularly our cheerleading team knows that with what happened at Central and all the extra work and things that our athletic department had to do to continue to provide space for our student athletes. It's something I think really needs to be mentioned as well. So I want to give a big thank you to Mr. Mike Dwyer.
Thank you. Well, sorry. Thank you, Dr. McBride. Thank you, Dr. Green, and of course to our school board, our community. Very excited to be here. I won't ramble too long. I got a lot of names to read through here. But just want to reiterate, you know, this winter was just a tremendous, tremendously successful winter for all of our athletes. So just incredibly proud of the passion, dedication, commitment that not only our student athletes, but also our community, our parents put in for our young people as a lifelong Lockportian. Just truly, truly proud to be here and proud to be able to share this evening with all our amazing athletes. So without further ado, Justin, come on up. Our first resolution tonight is to recognize this young man who may look familiar from last year, just a sophomore, Justin Wardlow, whereas Lockport Township High School Boys' Wrestling competed in the IHSA 3A State Competition on February 17th, 2024 at the University of Illinois, whereas sophomore Justin Wardlow placed second in the 138-pound state wrestling competition. And whereas Coach Jameson Oster and his coaches have aided and guided Justin in his success as a Lockport Township High School District 205 athlete. Therefore, being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Justin Wardlow is hereby recognized for his outstanding achievement and dedication to his school and community, and that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205 on this day, the 18th of March, 2024. Congratulations, ladies. Not to be outdone this season, our boys bowling team, come on up. Another tremendous season for them as well. This resolution will be recognizing Nathan Cantrell, Evan Charis, Aaron Crucio, Ross Carricker, Austin Lakowski, Hunter Phillips, Stephen Talasky, and Aaron Wendell. Whereas Lockport Township High School Boys' Bowling Team claimed fourth place at the IHSA State Finals this season, whereas Lockport Township High School Boys' Bowling Team competed in O'Fallon, Illinois on January 27th, 2024. And whereas coaches Ron Davis, Alan Bean, and Ryan McDaniel have aided and guided the members of the Lockport Bowling Team, Boys' Bowling Team, and their successes at Lockport Township High School District 205 student athletes. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following athletes are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities, and that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, on the 18th day of March, 2024. Congratulations, girls. Our girls wrestlers, come on down. This is a very special one. For the first time in the history of the state of Illinois, in the history of Lockport High School, our girls wrestling team claimed a state trophy. This resolution will recognize Avery Colella, Veronica Skabicki, Alavacario, Liz Ramirez, Bella Romando, Lucy Madrile, Kylie Green, Claudia Heaney, Miranda Pauly, Lizzie Rock, Dakota Obish, Cara Lopez, Sophie Kellner, Abby Carroll, Rebecca Ramirez, Lydia Crowbach, and Morgan Turner. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Girls Wrestling Team placed second, competing in the IHSA Team State Finals on February 24th, 2024 in Bloomington. Whereas coaches Nate Roth, Sam Fuentes, and Katie Fritz, and Jane Foitick have aided and guided the 2024 Girls Wrestling Team in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 student athletes. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the 2024 Girls Wrestling Team is hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and community, and that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, on the 18th day of March, 2024. Congratulations, girls. So our next two resolutions for Claudia and for Morgan, again, first ever Lockport High School Township State Champions. So Claudia Heaney and Morgan Turner, whereas Lockport Township High School Girls Wrestlers competed the IHSA State Competition in February 24, 2024 in Bloomington, Illinois. Whereas Lockport Township High School would like to recognize both sophomores, Claudia Heaney and Morgan Turner, for placing first at the state wrestling competition. Whereas coaches Nate Roth, Sam Fuentes, Katie Fritz, and Jane Foitick have aided and guided Claudia and Morgan and their success as Lockport Township High School District 205 student athletes. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, of Will County, Illinois, that Claudia and Morgan are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedications to their school and community, and that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, on this day, the 18th of March, 2024. Congratulations, coach. And another familiar group for this time of year, our cheer team, come on up. Another incredible run by this program. I love the bling. Love it. Can hear them coming. Come on up here, ladies, and I'll read your names as you guys are coming up. Our cheer team, this resolution is recognizing Lola Alex, Kennedy Bensfield, Justin Boyce, Keegan Brown, Emma Brutus, Maggie Calabrese, Alyssa Connell, Morgan Ebert, Carly Fiorillo, Nina Fiorillo, Grace Gad, Kennedy Hedinger, Peyton Judd, Lindsay Kamowitz, Gianna Lavati, Jordan Lirla, Ellie Namakis, Corinne Nowack, Michaela Parker, Maya Posco, Jade Pennscofer, Bianca Ritchie, Emma Smith, and Emmy Swice. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Cheerleading Team claimed third place at the IHSA State Competition for Competitive Cheer. And whereas Lockport Township High School Cheerleading Team competed at the Grosinger Motor Arena in Bloomington, Illinois on February 3rd, 2024. And coaches Jenny And coaches Jenny Ricardo, Danielle Calabrese, Alex Ricardo, Alyssa Scott, and Hallie Hoffman have aided and guided the members of the Lockport Cheer Team in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 student athletes. Now therefore being resolved, the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following student athletes are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedications to their school and communities. And that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205 on the 18th day of March, 2024. Congratulations, girls.
All right. Thank you again. Thanks, congratulations to all the student athletes, parents, coaches. We're very proud of you. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented? All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Thees. All in favor? All right. Motion passes. Well, thank you, everyone. Okay. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Well, good on that. So I'd like to add about Ramadan. This is the month of Ramadan and we have large and growing population of Muslim students. And currently, they what the month of Ramadan is, it's fasting each day from sunrise to sunset. And many Muslim students experience the day, you know, when you experience the first day, it's just, you know, your mind is playing tricks on you, you're being a little agitated and you just need some time to get eased into that schedule. But a lot of teachers have been very accommodating towards the students, whereas to gym, like they've been asking the students, how are you doing? You know, don't put too much pressure on yourself. So that's a good thing that the teachers have been doing towards the students, very, you know, accommodating towards them. As well as, you know, just classes in general that, you know, I've been in, the teachers just ask me, how's your day going, you know? Are you feeling, you know, up to it or, you know, do you need to take it easy? You know, so that's a very nice thing that the teachers put towards to ask the students, you know, how your day is going, just, you know, because you're not eating from sunrise to sunset and it can be difficult on some students.
Should you like get Gatorade?
It's, so there's no liquids permitted throughout the day, which is pretty, you know, I mean, some other, yeah, other religions have, you know, liquids available or some limited foods available or different. But, you know, Lockport as a community, they, we, you know, there's a growing Muslim population, there's growing, we're various, very diverse and different religions. And Lockport as a community makes it very, makes lots of opportunities for tons of the students to be created equally, you know, whereas each religion is, you know, have their own opportunity to express themselves. And that's a very good thing on behalf of the teachers and on behalf of the administration.
I'm just very curious to say how you would take it easy without breaking the fad.
So, I mean, students during gym time, you know, you have various like warmups or whatever during your gym class or, you know, during, uh, the main class would be gym that stresses your body and makes you want to have liquids or, you know, tires your body and strains it. But most of the gym teachers are now, you know, asking students, do you need a break or, you know, do you need to do less things? And they're very accommodating towards that.
Also to add, I really like how you're talking about the cultural awareness of the teachers, which I think more teachers are being now aware of. And also our media center also opens up, like the media center for people participating in Ramadan during their lunchtime, so they can come in and sign in during their, like their lunchtime and just sit there. So that's also another option that they want to do.
Yeah, and it's a great option for a lot of Muslim students.
When does it start?
Muslim, uh, Ramadan, the month of Ramadan, when does it start? It actually started about a week ago from today. It ends around April, uh, don't put this on me, thirteenth, around there, somewhere around there. So, yeah. It's a very fun time for lots of Muslim students, you know, just having that. It's a, you know, nice, nice opportunity for them. Any questions from the board?
Any upcoming events?
Any upcoming events? Well, we have prom, that's a far stretch, but, um, you know, there's a lot of new sports coming in, spring sports, you know, that are baseball, softball, you know, you got lacrosse, you got volleyball, so there's a lot of other sports coming up, but, um, not off the top of my mind.
No, could sound.
No.
And one question is clarifying for Josh McKenna. What I think I hear you saying is, one, is there any consideration when you're in situations where you're earning National Honor Society, you have a set that you have to earn there, and then a separate set you have to earn for the boards, could those ever be combined? I think that's what you may be asking, correct?
Yes, yes.
Consideration. Other groups have the same situation for membership. And then I also hearing you say, you know, opportunities, I think I'm hearing you say, opportunities here on campus and events we do like Will County Share Fest, we're gonna do an event in the spring called Seniors Will Grow, just keeping an eye on those and opportunities that you could Saturday, Sunday, a time right here on campus as opposed to looking, you know, those opportunities, you know, are welcome or helpful, help you get to those hours. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. As many opportunities as possible, you'll take it.
Yeah. Especially for, like, I know me and Josh, we both play tennis, it's a pretty fast schedule, so like during Saturdays when those opportunities are more likely to happen, I'm busy all day, you know? Like off-season, I have things during night and during season it's basically throughout the entire day. So those Saturdays are really just not an option for me, so I feel like
So weekday events?
Weekdays would be more easier accessible, yeah.
Does student council government like have volunteer hours open for like their?
No.
No.
We should probably think about that. Yeah, we should put that.
Have you thought about advocating for maybe a in-school community service? Like we have the assistant and guidance office? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I know that we host, um, student government has a couple of events that they do, and I'm not sure that we offer community service hours towards, like we had the blood drive, um, so I don't know if students were able to sign up and help with that or have any community service hours, but, I mean, we should probably make that open to students if that's, you know, either their, you know, homeroom or, you know, something accessible to them.
Any questions?
Thank you. Have a good night. AFT report, Ms. Kishla.
No reports.
No, okay, okay. All right, next moving on to the IASB report. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything to report?
Um, I did take the first of the, uh, the report card, understanding the school report card training. The, uh, if anybody wants to, uh, look at it, they could go out on IASB website, they got it recorded. Uh, the first one was basically navigation, you know, how to find it, how to navigate around. So I think there's two more. And then, um, I went to Dallas, in the, uh, is it Kosovo?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it, Kosovo.
Yeah, National Conference. And I, there were, uh, it was much different than the, uh, the N S D because it was few people, uh, but it was nice because you could go around and not get almost lost in the people. I took a class on unlocking literacy excellence modules for literacy leadership. And that was an interesting, uh, class because I learned something, understanding the difference between literacy versus reading. Whereas I had always took students being the same, that when we trying to understand literacy, that that means that you're reading, but there is a difference. So, um, and one of the things I liked that they said is, you learn to read, then you transition to reading to learn. And literacy is all about the words, understanding the words, learning the words. And then once you understand the words and what they mean, then you can read. I think I got that right, teachers in the room.
We concur. There's a lot of shaking your heads, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, so I thought that was interesting and I really, uh, learned a lot from that class. And also it helped me to understand why this, my daughter's in, my granddaughter's in kindergarten and why she has all these words coming on, now understand why they do that. Okay, then I went to a roundtable on, uh, on, uh, ethics. And that was interesting. It was, uh, equity, it was an equity roundtable. And basically we sat and there were various questions that we as a group had to answer. And I was happy that we are further along in a lot of these districts when it comes to, when it comes to, uh, equity, uh, cause we got EOS School, we have, uh, the Student Equity Council, we have, I think we still have the one for the teachers, right? Doctor?
Right, we have a, we have an equity team that goes with, um, EOS.
Yeah, so, yeah. And, uh, they asked, how is your board directing the work in addressing equity issues within the student system? How does your board ensure that resources including funding and educational opportunities are distributed equitably among all schools within the district? What initiatives and what effects do the training programs in place do to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion among both students and staff? And it goes on and on, but there was, it was good questions and, uh, and sharing ideas from other districts. Like I said, I, I realized that we were further along in much different. So that's a good thing, so. Uh, what else? And it's interesting, um, from the, uh, board questions that you sent out today, Dr. McBride. Sandra was giving some ideas and one, um, there was a, um, there was a session about whether you should renovate, renovate our bill. And they talked about how they went through the decisions of what they did, but, um, it was called Empowering Education Through Community Partnership. And they talked about forming partnerships with the business, industry leaders, community groups, uh, with the ability to take underserved students to typically inaccessible resources. So with that, they recommended you hire a fundraising person. I never thought about a, uh, school district raising funds. And the reason for the fundraising person is if you had to take out bonds or some loans, it would help pay it off quicker. And, um, and also to look for a bit, a school business coordinator, coordinator to take care of that. So that way the focus for the learning of students is not taken away. So I thought that was interesting, what they did. My notes. Pardon me for a second. I think that, uh, right now, so, but anyway, it was interesting and what they did was they had, um, the journal sessions, they had two, what did they, they had one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and one in the evening, which is different. So what they did was for the big topics, good example, AI, they had it as a journal session in the afternoon. It was a good training, but I think they should have had that one in the morning because, you know, AI is a heavy topic to, uh, talk about after lunches, but. So anyway, but it was, it was, like I say, it was a good, uh, train, uh, good conference. So, anyway, uh, Madam President, that's my, uh, report.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, okay. Uh, foundation report.
Good evening. Just wanted to update you all on, we are in full swing of scholarships that we offer. They're, uh, the ones that we kind of manage.
Foundation is, uh, helps with, we're stewards. Those are all due on the fifth of April, Friday after, um, spring break. So they are coming due pretty quick. Every student at LTHS that is graduating is eligible to apply. I, and I do kind of review and make sure that, uh, that the things are where they're supposed to be. And you can see that the kids are starting to get in. I know that a lot of them are, um, questioning about their FAFSA numbers that aren't in yet, which I know is frustrating for students. And it's okay, whenever a student asks, I always say, just, it's unavailable. The person reading it will know it's unavailable, so you tell your, it's, everyone knows it's unavailable, it's, it's okay. Um, if they're, if this, if the scholarship is for economic need, um, generally speaking, there's an economic interest, like there's a question asking you to summarize what that need is. So the scholarship kind of addresses that, the application addresses it separately. So encourage friends that are not sure about it, it's fine, everyone knows that it's not there. And I know it's frustrating for the kids as they're trying to get ready for what's next. So there's that. Um, we're super excited that we have a new board member and a potential fifteenth member kind of on the horizon, actually. There's a few people that have actually come forward and like, yeah, so I'm, I'm excited about that, I, you know, more is better. And then lastly, I, um, was super excited to be a part of, be invited to something that actually Tori Del Ponte is a part of. It's a Leading With Heart, uh, group that a bunch of our kids are a part of. And I was able to attend on Sunday and watch them do some presentations. And I just had to share with the board that when one of the students was describing another, they literally used the word that the, the student was a winner and I couldn't help myself, I instantly thought of my colleague, Dr. Carrie Green, because what is a porter?
Porter's a winner.
So, so that, you guys have questions? Great, thank you.
And I do is, uh, Mrs. Adolf kind of exits, just something the board might not be aware of. Are you, are you aware of what's going on with the, with the FAFSA?
In letting us just?
Yeah, just for the public, um, and being, having a college student. Uh, our seniors are in a tough dilemma that we have not seen in many, many years. This year, the, the FAFSA was revamped completely. I would say as a user, much easier form, easy, way easier to, to use, good, good stuff. However, it was supposed, it usually is released in October, it was supposed to be released in December, wasn't released in December, was released in January. What that's done with colleges is it puts colleges way behind in telling students what their financial aid awards are. Typically, students know that, they commit by May first and they know the college and what they pick. It's probably the first time in my career that many students will not know by May first what their financial aid package is. Some schools, state schools in Illinois have already put their commit date back to June one. As you imagine, it's probably tough for a lot of families to commit when you don't know what your financial aid is. So I think our seniors are handling it with grace, but also with a certain amount of anxiety over that. So that's what's happening.
Thank you. All right, legislative report.
Legislative report, well, if you are a Springfield watcher like I am, um, you know, thing, things are, things are heating up. As a complete sidecar that I've, you know, talked to the Board of Education about, um, you know, we continue to partner with Taft Elementary District on the school construction grant. I've sent one letter downstate, regardless of the outcome of tomorrow's election, I plan on sending another letter downstate. You know, the school construction grant program was in effect until 2003. If you, uh, by the Capital Projects Board, your, um, school construction, you know, um, program, project was approved, you got on the list, you moved up on the list, and that made you qualify for thirty-five percent of that project, whatever it was, funding, and that's really now for twenty years been, been suspended. Would help local communities quite a bit. Um, I think most superintendents would agree, we've seen two things. One, we've seen an increase in the percent of schools that need care and renovation or, um, new building. That's up to about, you know, I saw one independent study, fifty-nine percent of schools in Illinois. At that place, and once, what it's done is it, it's created, you know, situations like you are in as a board of going, going out for referendum, uh, one way or the other. So you see, this is a season Chicago-wide where I'm seeing a lot of construction, renovation, remodeling, um, you know, uh, out there. So I will be Wednesday, regardless of the outcome, you know, sending another letter to my colleague, Dr. Sanders, who's a state superintendent. Um, couple of bills that we're really watching, probably at the top, I think the most consequential is a, you know, and I always put the links in there, it is a bill about dual credit and community colleges across the state. This also, you know, has bearing for our union president members. And really what we're, what we're in a tussle with, there's no other way to describe it, is our, our community colleges and what qualifies a teacher to teach a dual credit class. We, superintendents, our lobbyists are arguing, there should be one platform across the state. Much like if I'm a licensed social studies and English teacher, I can take that anywhere in the state, teach that as well as economics, um, anywhere in Illinois. Um, I don't have to go to a different township or county and then recertify. The community colleges would like control over the certification. Julia Junior College, Robonce, Moraine Valley, C O D would, would, would set the terms and conditions. And we, we just feel that there should be one single understood platform for what qualifies you to teach dual credit, especially because dual credit is so important to our students. It allows you to walk out of high school with a real college transcript. In the case of Illinois, it has to be accepted by any directional school, there's a lot on the line. It makes it very difficult for districts to sort out, oh, you need a master's, oh, you need a master's plus eighteen additional hours, oh, you need a master's plus thirty additional hours. Some of the proposals we're seeing from the community colleges, it's by discipline. This discipline, it's a master's, and that discipline is a master's plus thirty, by department at the community college. So we're keeping an eye on that, it is a, it is an arm wrestle right now. Some of the other bills, you know, if you'd like me to talk, uh, about them, um, you know, uh, one deals with a student being, uh, you know, removed from their residence, you know, DCFS comes into a home, removes a student, uh, that student, much like a homeless student, could continue going to their home school, even if they're residing in a ward of the state location outside of their district. This adds mandatory, uh, the next one adds mandatory training for you on student outcomes and student assessments. Another that allows students to seek alternatives and waive state graduation requirements through demonstrating mastery in other ways. Another, um, uh, you know, is set fairly consequential for us, um, it is requiring three-point seatbelts on all school buses. And so that would require, that would require in our case, you know, we have a large bus fleet, retrofitting, um, those buses, those don't currently have three-point seatbelts, for example. There is some safety concern, um, especially for younger children, to get out of those seatbelts in case you ever had kind of an accident, right? Maybe not so much for, for older students. And then just the cost of that, you know, obviously for districts. And then there's an interesting bill that essentially would create a moratorium on bills related to schools. It has been, you know, three years of literally hundreds, you've seen it tonight, you're gonna approve a whole nother stack of policies that are related. So this is a moratorium on state legislation related to regulation of schools. Interesting. So just some that we're following. Any questions? You know, those bills that we're following?
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to public comment follow-up.
All right, public comment follow-up, and this is, you know, um, you know, we had one public comment, um, last month, so this is, uh, I think I'm coming, kind of coming at this both in reference to that public comment and in reference to comments as I've made my travels, you know, tomorrow election through referendum. Um, I'm gonna put a graphic up that I, that I'd like to have guide us. And, you know, first, um, you know, I think, I think what I want to address is there's been made in, in, in public comment, but then also broader questions that I've had, a comparison of expenditures at East Campus versus expenditures at Central Campus. You know, at first I saw some investigation of our capital projects, but really, I would ask anybody to go to our operations and maintenance to really take a look at what, what is being spent. You know, those are two very different funds that we have, they, they have very, um, different, purposes. Uh, I think it's also important to acknowledge East Campus versus Central Campus. Just learned a tremendous amount about the history of all of our buildings, I've become a historian of all of our buildings, you know, uh, this building is over five hundred thousand square feet. It houses, you know, almost three thousand students. It also houses almost all of our marquee programs and all of our marquee rentals. So its use is heavy. It's used in a different way, um, used for rentals, used for all those students, um, and, and just used in a different way than Central and it's an entirely different building. You know, by some, um, you know, standards, many of the sections of this building are brand new, right? But just this graphic to look at operations and maintenance, I think tells a tale. You know, we broke this out by the total amount from 2018 moving forward to 2023, 2024, I'm sorry, it's a little dim up there. Not only the total expenditure as compared to both buildings, but per square foot, if you just broke it out, that's a typical thing that's used in construction. So 2018, 2019, I'll just do the square footage, expenditures on Central per square foot, two dollars forty-eight cents, East, two dollars and forty-three cents. 2019, 2020, two dollars and seven cents, East, two dollars and seventy-two cents. 2020, uh, 2021, two dollars forty-six cents, um, at East, two dollars and forty-five cents. 2021, 2022, two dollars and fifty cents per square foot at Central, four dollars and thirty-eight, um, uh, cents, uh, at, at East. That was a particular year, what accounts for that is the renovation of the East Campus Library, uh, which many of you know, that was a major renovation that we took care of, you know, um, really during, during the COVID era, you know, wrapped that up. 2023, twenty, uh, 2022, 2023, three dollars and ten cents at, um, Central and at East, three dollars and eighteen cents, and then in, um, this current year, two dollars and sixty-eight cents at, um, Central, two dollars and forty-six cents at, at East. What, what I'm trying to suggest is not any kind of equivalence, because these are two very different buildings. Well, what I'm trying to suggest is there's been a robust, uh, attention to repair and maintenance at both buildings. There are plentiful examples of that. Last month, W J E came before you, did their presentation, a couple startling things that they said. They said they got up into the roof, they thought they would see leaks all over, the only thing they found was a legacy leak that had dried up, they referenced all the roof repair that we've done at Central Campus, right? I'm bringing that up because some of the higher expenditures, like in that year, 2021, 2022, or if you look at the recent roof replacement, repair here at Central, I mean, here at East. At East, we've replaced parts, we've put in a new chiller, a new parking lot, a new roof section, new electric or, um, and, and lighting in the auditorium that hasn't been done in twenty-five years. All of that here at East is part of our five-year cycle, right? Where we have our architects come in and say what needs to be, needs to be replaced. But none of that is an entire system. I think that's a difference that has to be made between the situation we face at Central and the situation we face here at East. We replaced a chiller, but we did not take out the entire HVAC, HVAC system and replace it. The difference in those costs would be dramatic. Here at East, we've replaced components. The need at Central is replacing whole systems, whole electrical system, whole roof, whole HVAC. In order to do that accurately, and the board in this period of time, in your repair and maintenance, uh, program, and you can see the total, total dollars amount, dollar amount, um, in that time, you've come to this referendum moment because to replace the entire HVAC system would be much larger than some of the expenditures we've made here at East. Because they're system-wide, not just one component of the system. We're not replacing a boiler or a section of the wiring. component of the system. We're not replacing a boiler or a section of the wiring. It's replacing all the wiring in the building, the entire roof, all of the windows. So what I'm really trying to address is, there's been, you know, out there, that there's been some kind of neglect of Central. And what I would argue is that there's been a robust repair and maintenance that's been going on at Central, per square foot, that has kept up with East. At East, you've responded to things on your five-year repair, maintenance, and improvement list that, that are, that are major components, but they're not whole systems. The need at Central are whole systems. That's ultimately, you know, where we're going. Right now, there's construction underway on the ceilings that you've identified, WJE have identified, need to come out. Those, those are, those are massive systems, right? That, that need to come out because we're worried about that architectural, that construction method used in, used in other rooms. So I just want to take any questions that you have about funding both of these buildings, keeping up with both of these buildings, dollars that you've spent on both of these buildings. And I, I would simply submit to anyone in the public, really what's led us to this moment is, we are at a point with Central where major systems have to be replaced. I would also go out on a limb that if they're not replaced, we will see a repeat of what we're experiencing right now. WJE forensic architects said, no signs that those ceilings were going to collapse. Zero. No water, no plaster falling, no cracking, no buckling, no signs at all. I think what that, what, what, you know, the building ultimately needs is these replacement systems so that you have prevention and so that the building is habitable. Because if any of those systems, whole systems fail, it won't be habitable. And I think that's, you know, ultimately a much, much bigger ask than what we're doing with just operations and maintenance, just repair and fix. So I don't know if there's any questions. I know Mr. Thompson's here as well, and Mrs. Croy that we could answer.
You're very informative on this.
I think isn't an example of that, the cost, at least on the breakout cost, that's been shared with the, with the public, the cost of replacing the HVAC system with the air conditioning.
Right.
That is a significant number that you can't have boilers running and replacing, have a new air, air conditioning system going in at the same time. It's, it's the whole system that needs to be done all at once, not, not piecemeal. And that, that's very difficult to do within concrete block walls and a number of other areas that are difficult to get duct work, because with a boiler system, it's not ducts like we would have with our furnace and other systems. And there's a lot of intrusion that occurs because of that construction methodology that would need to get in. Now, could you use smaller ducts or, or things like that? Start to lose efficiency. And, you know, when you think about cost balance and cost savings, you know, are there cost savings for the taxpayers by doing more work in, in an immediate effort than doing a piecemeal over time, where you're temporarily heating the auditorium space or cooling the auditorium space when you're ultimately gonna rip it, rip a lot of it out?
Right.
And so just trying to think through a lot of those different, because it is an entire systems replacement as opposed to just a, replace the chiller, replace one section of, of a building, put in new desks and, and other components like that. And so that's why, you know, as I have continued to think through the different components of the renovation option that is to the voters tomorrow, there's just some cost efficiencies that over the long term will save money as opposed to cost more money later if you just, if you do it bit by bit.
Right. A really good example of that is currently the, the building is heated by steam. And steam boiler is very efficient, except for those boilers are seventy years old. They, you know, well past lived, you know, you know, their, their repair life, you know, when, you, you know, many times when we have an issue with those boilers, Mr. Thompson has, has talked about how we have to replace tubes or valves, what we have to do to get those replaced when the manufacturer doesn't exist anymore. But for example, what's more efficient? Well, hot water, cold water to heat and cool. But if you change over a whole building, a large building, two hundred and sixteen square feet, and now not only are you gonna have a different delivery metal, method, you're not gonna go with steam anymore, you're gonna go with water, then that requires every square inch of that building has to have, you know, that system put in. And then that connects in many ways to the electrical system, in terms of power to run it, distribution of electricity, modernization of electricity. The heating and the cooling in the building, we heard last month from WJE, that a lack of climate control in the building is a preservation threat to the building. And in their minds, not my mind, in their minds and in their report, was a contributing factor to that ceiling collapsing in room 310, a lack of constant temperature control. So the whole building, you know, now you get into the masonry, the masonry in the windows, and you see the corrosiveness in the windows. So you, so, you know, really, I guess the point I'm trying to make just tonight in response is, you have been doing robust maintenance, repair, and fix. The work at Central requires a much more substantial commitment of both dollars time and construction. Not something that, that, that I believe you were positioned in, in these years to carry out without some kind of staging or planning that we've been talking about for the past two years, right?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30, available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in issues brought to the board. And we have Ms. Linda Sivikas, if I pronounced that right.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Linda Sivikas. Twenty-five years ago, when my husband and I decided to plan our family, we agreed quality high school districts was a priority. After much research, we had our house built here in Lockport. Since then, my two children and my two stepchildren have attended and graduated from Lockport Township High School. Speaking from experience, having a campus dedicated to freshmen is very important, considering the amount of students that are merging from different feeder schools. It is very scary and stressful leaving your closest friends in a smaller eighth-grade school to attend a much larger school with many people you do not know. Dr. Carrie Green, the principal of Central Campus, stresses the importance of creating a new and comfortable learning environment along with having the pride of being a porter. I am also a peer professional here at Lockport Township High School and have been a porter for eight years. As a porter, mother, and taxpayer, I watch all of the monthly board meetings. Recently, I have participated in Dr. McBride's very informative YouTube online discussions, read multiple documents, enjoyed the seven YouTube videos created by the LTHS referendum committee, and attended an hour-and-a-half tour of Central Campus. Unfortunately, as expected with age, wear, and tear, there is a probability that some of the older and outdated equipment at Central Campus, such as the boiler, plumbing, or electrical equipment, may fail. If this were to happen, where would we relocate our eight hundred freshman students and staff? Lincoln Way North may not always be an option. Relocating eight hundred freshman students plus staff to East Campus would cause approximately four thousand students and six hundred staff members to learn and work in split shifts. This scenario would alter the high-quality education our LTHS students currently receive. It has been researched and documented that it is not feasible to add on to, add on to the East Campus building or to create a new freshman center on the East Campus property. Again, many documented and researched reasons, ideas would cost much more than eighty-five million that is requested in this referendum and would take many years to complete. It has been said and confirmed by experts in this field that the building of Central Campus is structurally sound. Therefore, a new building is not the answer. Repairs, renovations, alterations, improvements, and new equipment are necessary to keep our existing building operating safely and efficiently for many years to come for future LTHS freshman students. In closing, I would like to thank Dr. McBride, the Board of Education, Ms. Croy, the various architects, and the LTHS 205 referendum committee for providing voters with much-needed, accurate, and truthful information. It has been questioned in the past why LTHS cannot give voters an A, B, or C choice. This is because the Illinois statutes explicitly, explicitly state the format working of a ballot used for school board bond and tax election must be a yes or a no. It is imperative this referendum passes so that future LTHS freshman students can continue to learn and begin their journey in life in a safe and renovated building. Please vote yes for this renovation. And thank you for your time tonight, and enjoy your evening.
Hello. My name is Nina Ferry Lance. I'm a 2009 graduate of LTHS, but my roots as a porter go much deeper than that. My family has lived in Lockport since they immigrated from Italy in the 1920s. My mom and dad both graduated from Lockport Township High School. My dad taught here and coached here. And thanks to the fight song, Lockport was the first word I actually knew how to spell correctly. And it was in these halls here and at Central that I was inspired and called to pursue a career in education that has greatly changed the trajectory of my life, as well as shaping my future. Tonight, I want to talk about two times, two other times that LTHS and the community surrounding it changed, changed the trajectory and shaped the future of the students at LTHS and the opportunity that the community has to do that again tomorrow. In 1970, as some of you may know, athletics at LTHS were on the verge of becoming obsolete because of funding. All of the athletes would not have a season. However, the community, especially the Lockport Lions Club spearheaded by Dr. Floyd Pelletier, came alongside LTHS and provided funding for athletics to continue. How did this shape the future? Athletes were given a chance to compete. My dad was one of them. Because his senior season was saved, he was able to go on and earn the title of All-State Quarterback, which eventually gave him a full-ride scholarship to the University of New Mexico. That trajectory and the opportunity he got his senior year at Lockport changed his life forever. And changed it for the better, obviously, because of the community and LTHS. When I was in high school, from 2005 to 2009, LTHS saw great growth in enrollment, and school became crowded and super distracting. This is when the first referendums were voted on and shot down multiple times. The trajectory of my high school career was not bad. I, I enjoyed it. However, it did result in split schedules, overcrowded classes, and lots of stress on both teachers and students. I started school ridiculously in the morning, and as an athlete all four years at LTHS, still had to continue on with sports even after starting school at six forty-five or something. It was, it was rough. This is an example of where the community did not surround the school, and it greatly affected the student and teacher population. However, the community has the opportunity again tomorrow to shape the future of the students at LTHS. As I think everyone knows, obviously, there's strong opposition and strong support for the referendum. And the opposition is, as someone who lives and breathes Lockport, is, it definitely cuts deep. I know firsthand how the decisions of the community can have long-term effects on the student population. As Dr. McBride just mentioned, Central is not a lost cause. Anyone who's gone on the tours could see the beauty of the building and the meticulous care that has been given to the school over time. When I went on the tour, I probably have not been in Central since 2008, 2009, so before I graduated. And I was impressed by all of the upgrades that have happened, even from when I graduated. It is not a lost cause at all. I urge the community to think about the long-term consequences that rallying around LTHS and voting yes on the referendum can have for generations to come, that truly shaping the future and the students that walk through the halls. Lockport is said to be a city of historic pride, and I would love to see it once again be a city of educational pride, which is why I will be voting yes tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Audrey Manley.
I'm back again to talk about supporting the referendum. My name's Audrey Manley, and I have been supporting Lockport schools for sixty years in my taxes. And it's, I looked at it as an investment in the future and in our, in our community. And if I would live for another sixty years, I'd keep paying taxes to invest in the schools. I believe in what we're doing here. I had four children graduate from Lockport. I was married to someone who taught here for over thirty years, and I was on the school board for eight years from 2020 to 2000, or 2000 to 2008. I was secretary for two years, vice president for two years, and president for four years. So my roots are deep here. And I was really interested in what you were saying about renovations, because that's what my whole point here is. I've seen what's happened here at Lockport in renovations. When I first moved here, there were three high schools, Lockport Central, Lockport West, and Lockport East. And in the sixties, I think, a newly formed district in Romeoville took Lockport West and bought it from the taxpayers of Lockport. There are still some people out in the community who think that they, the taxpayers of Lockport, gave Romeoville High School, or Lockport West, to Romeoville. No, there are probably people in this community that still remember Bill Rutter bringing the check over here to Lockport District Office to pay the taxpayers back for that. That's what really happened. But my talk was really most about the renovations, and I was interested to hear what you had to say. This referendum is about renovations, the major renovations to Central. Over the years, as you've said, Lockport East has had many renovations, and Central. It's part of continuing to provide our students with the very best possible opportunities. I know that when a decision is made here, it's made because it's going to affect student achievement. That's always the bottom line. The students and student achievement is what drives everything here. All the changes, all the renovations for enrollment, for curriculum, for course offerings, state requirements, we've, over the years, had to make a lot of changes. If a person who graduated from Lockport, Lockport East or Central, like you said, in a few years, there, you can just come back and see the, the kinds of things that have happened. It has to happen. It has to happen for student achievement, for preparing students for the future. This, for a hundred and some years, this school district has provided opportunities for for kids to learn and grow here. And what I see happening at Lockport Central now with the freshmen, I just see as a jewel in our community. That school is a jewel, but what goes on inside that building is amazing when you think that kids from seven different middle schools that have been competing against each other in sports and whatever for how many years, suddenly are all in the same building, all those adolescents. How would you like to face that? Bringing all those adolescents together after they've been competing against each other? And they turn them into porters at Lockport, at Central School. By the time they leave their porters, it's miraculous. We can't lose that. We have, and we have to do whatever we can to keep that going, to keep a student achievement there and the social-emotional growth and the opportunities for all of the different curricular activities and things. We've got to keep it going, and we have to do it in a better way than we're able to do now with what we have to work with. Just kind of as an aside, I...
Your time's up.
What?
Your time is up.
My time's up?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, what you've done is for the right reasons, and you've done it the right way, and I support you, and I'm really hoping that we can continue the wonderful work that has been going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a Ms. Tammy Case.
Good evening. I'm here real quickly to talk about the referendum and the taxes. I have a couple of different stories I'll share with you. I have a brother who lives in the district, has lived in the district for nearly twenty years. Him and I both, obviously, come from a neighboring town. We chose to live in the Lockport District. This is where we chose to buy our houses. My brother's taxes last year were thirteen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Now, he's got a little bit bigger house than me, but that's a lot of money. So when I put his information in through the tax calculator on the, on the website, he's looking at another two hundred and ninety dollars if the referendum goes through. Now, that's just the referendum. That doesn't count thirty-three Cs taxes that are going to go up. So LTHS last year took twenty-six hundred and eighty-nine dollars from him for taxes. Thirty-three C, they got you guys beat, fifty-four hundred dollars he paid to thirty-three C. So thirty-three C got their levy passed, LTHS got their levy passed, and now we want to do an eighty-five million dollar referendum. My brother told me this ten years ago, that if my taxes keep going up, I will lose my dream home. My brother has a decent job. He makes good money. But we all know that our salaries, especially some of us people who aren't brand-new to the working field making nineteen dollars an hour, standing at a cash register, our salaries have not gone up dramatically like, like entry-level jobs. I have another friend. She lives in a three-bedroom townhouse in Lockport. Three-bedroom townhouse. So she's sharing her driveway, she's sharing a wall in her building, and she's sharing her backyard. Eight thousand dollars are her taxes a year. So when we say, oh, well, it's only eleven dollars a month, or it's only twenty-four dollars a month, that twenty-four dollars a month times twelve months, that's a lot. It's a huge tax burden on the people in this community. It isn't about whether or not Central is viable to keep as a building. It's clearly viable to keep as a building. We all know that the kids started there in August in two thousand twenty-three, had no idea that any of this stuff was going to happen. What we need to do is tighten our belts, get our stuff in a row, get our ducks in a row, make a plan, get a plan. Is there a Plan B? I've been told by not only staff, but board members, there's no Plan B. When this, if this eighty-five million dollar referendum fails, there's no Plan B. The Plan B is what? To throw it on the November ballot? That's, I mean, you guys have all been elected to, to, to work for us, to keep, to be good stewards of our, of our tax money. You know, this is, and, and this has become a very red and blue situation in my mind. It's really, it's very black and white. The school needs to be functioning, the school needs to be taken care of, and money needs to be allocated correctly. When you're looking at stuff and three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars has been spent on, spent on Central and nineteen point two million was spent on East, I understand it's difficult to redo major systems. It's your jobs. It's the maintenance people's jobs. It's your head of maintenance, it's your staff, it's you guys together. You've got to make it work. That's your jobs. That's what you, some of you are elected to do. However, every single one of you who's been elected to do that, you went out, you got your signatures, and you wanted this position unless you were appointed. You asked for this job. And we appreciate that, but you need to do the work. You cannot just rely on asking the taxpayers for more money. Got to fix the building, and you got to fix it within your means, and you got to make it work. Because not everybody can afford it. And I don't care what other people have told you, we are, I, I work in the auto industry. I have a trucking company that I work with. They can't get their trucks back to Illinois. People are leaving Illinois for the past three years in such droves, they have to pay people to drive cars to other states to bring back their trucks because nobody's coming this way. Normally, you rent a truck here, somebody rents the truck there and comes here. No one's coming to Illinois. We know that our population isn't going to go up. We know our demographics, because you guys have said it yourselves. It's not going up in the next ten years. It's going to stay pretty flat. Thank you. You've got to work within your budget. You've got to, you've got to work for the people because that's what you asked to do. You all filled out those petitions. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, notices and communications.
So we have, I know it was received from the family of Ronald Rico, a beloved LTHS bus driver who recently passed. His family thanked the Board of Education administrators, faculty, and staff for the beautiful basket and flowers and the love and support we've given. The tribute of the buses was amazing and will always be remembered from the, from Rita and family. Also received a communication from Kathy Maxwell, who's not here today, but it was her birthday, so she sent a thanks to the board members. Thank you so very much for the beautiful flower arrangement. It brightened, it brightened my day.
I think you had another one. Was it for Ms. Castillo?
I don't. I thought we did that one before. I think we did. Yeah.
We might have. I think we just...
All right. It was just probably added the board taxes there.
Yeah, we had a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of people who are under the weather. We have Ms. Johnson who's under the weather, and I am serving as the board secretary as well tonight because Mrs. Maxwell is under the weather.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then we have here, you see the Freedom of Information requests. Okay. And then moving on to our approval items. All right. Do I have, I'll probably combine these two. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes and the closed session, closed session minutes of February twenty, twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Navarro.
Abstain.
Mr. Travis.
Yeah.
Mr. Thies. Yep, gotcha.
Yes.
Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right. Again, I'll combine these two together.
Oh, wait, that's the regular one. The special one is the next one, right?
It is. It is.
Um, mine, I got confused for a second. Because I was in, on the twenty-third, right?
Mr. Navarro, you were present on the, on the twentieth.
I was.
You were.
Yeah.
That was a regular board meeting?
Yeah.
You can abstain even if you're present. Do you want to change your vote?
I can change my vote to yes, please. I should.
And, that's all right. And then, Mr. Navarro, the, you know, kind of pointed out, on February twenty-third, we had a special board meeting related to student discipline. We had a quorum of four board members, the three board members who were not present. It would be, you know, most appropriate to abstain. So, on these two sets of minutes.
All right. Oh, that's okay. That's right. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-fourth special board meeting and the closed session minutes of the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four special board meeting?
Second.
It's been motion by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Thies.
Yes.
Mr. Navarro.
Abstain.
Uh, Mrs. Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Johnson, I think you would have to abstain. You were not present at the meeting.
Okay, abstain. I'm sorry.
Uh, Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Travis.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Travis, I think you would also have to abstain because you were not present at the meeting.
Okay, abstain.
And Ms. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our treasurer's report. Ms. Croy.
Do we approve board member expenses?
Uh, yeah, we have to do board member expenses. But have a seat, Mrs. Croy.
All right. Sorry, no, we didn't do that. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the March twenty twenty-four board member expenses?
Some of.
Second.
It's been motion by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Thies.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Travis.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. Now we can, all right, Ms. Croy.
Did you do the honors adjusting us? Thank you.
Yes.
So the first thing I want to point out to the board, I don't usually talk about things in the bills payable report, but I do want to point out a couple of things in the bills payable, payable report. I don't know if the board members remember. It's been a little while that I've put information, it's been a while since I've put information about drivers' ed vehicles in our reports. But I know I've discussed it in the last two budgets because our drivers' ed vehicles are getting older and we need to just start replacing them, but we were having trouble finding vehicles, right? So we were able to, wonderful Director of Transportation, Dr. Dave Niedusbauer, was working with Apple Chevy, and he was able to purchase, now that the bid limit has moved from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand, the board has previously approved that, that change in our press policies to align with the new law, right? That allowed us to buy one new drivers' ed vehicle, brand-new, twenty-seven thousand dollars, as well as, towards the end of this, there's an additional payment for a used vehicle. We were able to buy a used vehicle as well. Used vehicles are, used equipment of any kind is a specific exception in bid law. So that allowed us to get two brand-new vehicles, which is great because we're down two right now. We have two that are not functioning, and I believe that we were going to be trading those in. I'd have to double-check with Mr. Niedusbauer what kind of credit we got for that, because I don't have that paperwork in front of me. But I just wanted to point that out, that there are two vehicle purchases on there and the relation to the bid law and how that works. Our goal is to try and maybe do a few more every year to replace the fleet because it's been quite a number of years since we bought, originally, when we bought the drivers' ed vehicles, we bought them in groups as well. We did like four, four, two and two, I think. So that's kind of the goal, is to work through that. If we do purchase more than one at a time, we would most likely have to try to attempt to get bids, but we've not been successful really trying to get those in the past. Dealers have not really been amenable to submitting them, but we would have to attempt to do that if we're going to try and buy more than one at a time new. Any questions about replacing this vehicle? We have twelve. Ten functioning, and then the two new ones now will replace the two that are not functioning. Yes. And we actually went with Trailblazers this time, so they're, you know, a small SUV vehicle as opposed to the four-door sedans. So they're a little bit more multifunction, right? And since we figured it would be okay to do that, traditionally, we've done sedans because that's what students have learned on, but nowadays, we've got students with trucks and SUVs in the parking lot. So we figured, you know, having a couple of those types of vehicles that kids can rotate through is a good experience for them as well. So I just wanted to point that out. Like I said, I usually don't point too much out in this report, but that was something kind of unique. You'll see, you know, purchasing vehicles like that isn't something we do all the time, so I wanted to address that. In the financial report, Dr. McBride, can you open those up for me, please? So the other thing I want to talk about in here is the effect of some of our spending that we've had to do out of the Operations and Maintenance Fund. So this report here always shows us the top part is cash and the bottom part is investments, right? So it's the net cash and investments, liquid cash of the, of the district at any point in time, fairly, somewhat liquid. And what we had to do this month because of the spending for some of the central expenses and paying Lincoln Way North, et cetera, and yet, and not, and being in our low point also, right? We're at our low point because we haven't started collecting spring, spring taxes yet. What we had to do is we had to reclassify some investments between funds because the Operations and Maintenance Fund had some investments placed out, but then ran low on cash, so we needed to basically cash them in. And what we did there, instead of cashing them in and forfeiting interest, is we just transfer ownership to a different fund. Does that make sense? So can you scroll down to the bottom of this for me, please? So what you'll see here in the matured column, you'll see seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars maturing into the Operations and Maintenance Fund. That just means we reclassified it. I put the cash, we put the cash back in that fund and moved the investments to the other funds. So then interest gets split, you know, when, when it matures between them. Can you scroll to the statement of position for me, please? So then the other, where you can really see the effect of this, thank you, Dr. McBride, is in the, the Operations and Maintenance Fund, you can see how low cash is right now, right? So fund balance on the bottom of, of this one. Can you scroll just a little bit further down to the bottom for me? Thank you. You'll see that we only have right now one month cash on hand with Operations and Maintenance. So it's likely, and this is through February, so it's likely that I'm going to have to do that again in the end of March as well, because we're not going to, and potentially even April, because we do not have taxes coming in there until May. So I'm going to be monitoring the cash in the Operations and Maintenance Fund pretty closely as we go through the next few months. Worst-case scenario, we would be borrowing, in theory, from the working cash fund if we need to, to, to cover for the Operations and Maintenance Fund. There will be other revenue that we could potentially move as well. I think I mentioned this when I was talking about the preliminary of what I think I'm going to amend. We'll see that tentative amended budget next month. There are some revenue sources that we could, instead of budgeting them in the, in Fund Ten, we can move them to Fund Twenty, and that'll help as well, right? So all of those things will be taken into consideration as we do it, but that's the lowest that we've been in the Operations and Maintenance Fund in a while. Obviously, that's where most of these expenditures are coming from, right? Are there any questions on that and how I'm trying to manage that cash for the districts?
And just, you know, something I think is important, I know, Mrs. Croy, we did, in February twenty-sixth, we did an online town hall. Mrs. Croy was the star of that, and I appreciated her going through these different funds. One of the things I think that you said that was very important, both for the board and for the public, is whenever you look at our liquid cash and you look at our investments, now, liquid cash, oftentimes that liquid cash is spoken for as well, but the investments are maturing as we need those expenses. Oftentimes, I encounter when someone looks in that lower right-hand corner at our total fund balance, a belief that that is idle cash. That is cash that can be used, that, that sixty-five million dollars could be allocated as you wish. But, but it's not. be allocated as you wish, but, but it's not. All of that, not all of that is liquid cash. Much of that cash has already been budgeted and spoken for. A good half of that is invested and maturing as we go along. Ultimately, what you're seeing right now in full color display is the purpose and the use of cash reserves. Having cash reserves on hand, so when you have it unforeseen, instance, you can be responsive, transferring funds without more extreme financial measures, deficit spending, increased debt, working cash bonds, things like that. You know, to Mrs. Hayes's point, I think this is a demonstration of living within your means, where you're handling the situation that's come to us at Lincoln Way North and Central through these fund balances. But I think the distinction about them, that that $65 million that you're looking at right now in your fund balance is not just simply, you know, as I said, idle cash sitting and waiting to be spent. Just an important point, I think that needs to be made.
Any other questions on that report? The only other pieces of information you've got in here, you've got the typical other reports. I do, I have continued to leave the most recent five-year financial forecast in there. That will get updated. Just not sure exactly what timeline I'll end up updating that on. This, of course, was when we were talking, this was updated the last time when we were talking about doing the debt service abatement. So, coincidentally, just this week, actually, it might have been Friday, I received from the county the, our tax rate sheets that need to be reviewed and approved as far as the allocation between the funds. And the debt service abatement is reflected on there. There is no levy for debt service on that. So, if you look at the, our tax rate breakdown for the 2023 year, it's zero for the debt service portion, because the board abated it. So, that is properly reflected in there as the board has wished. The rate, again, once again, I believe, goes down to 1.7. I gotta, I don't remember, 1.87, I think, instead of 1.9 something, if I can remember off the top I had, but the duck papers are on my desk. So, this will get updated again as we get closer to where we end up actually happening. So, what's, we are already below the $72 million of the productive budget for 2024, so we'll see where that ends up after all of the expenses from the repairs. So, I'm not sure exactly how close this is going to be. It might be a little bit lower by the end.
One thing I got, just a great question today from a community member about debt swapping, really very typical strategy that districts use, you know, as you retire debt, you deliberately take on new debts, really the taxpayers don't know a difference in the debt, the debt service, right? You just, that debt gets retired, you take on a debt of similar size and keep moving forward. So, the board might remember, 2020, 2021, we fairly aggressively retired quite a bit of debt, but we have a, we had a conversation, would we debt swap? Would we just retire that debt and immediately increase that debt? And at that time, entering into the pandemic, financial distress, we decided not to. We did not replace that debt retirement with debt of similar size. So, actually, that tax rate continued to drop. We felt that was the right thing to do in those pandemic years when people were out of work, having all kind of new stresses. A continued expression of that is the abatement that you see here, where we're abating the debt service. But strategically, that was a decision that you made and that we recommended at that time, given where we were in those pandemic years.
The last thing in the treasurer's report is just the upcoming things. So, next month, you'll see the tentative budget, I meant tentative amended budget. And then sometime in May, I'm not sure exactly what the 30-day mark, date mark is, we'll post, and we'll have to have a board hearing in June for the tenet, for the amended budget hearing. So, those are all just listed in the bottom, upcoming things. June is typically, April, May, June is when you'll start to see the additional pieces of salary approvals for the next year as well. So, and as the board knows, we're in negotiations with our union as well. So, we're hopeful that we'll be bringing contract as well in the upcoming months here too, so. Thank you. Any other questions on treasurer's report?
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the February 2024 treasurer's report?
Some of.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Shimon Rogers. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Travis?
Yeah.
Dr. Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Teese?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Navara?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Amendmentary reports, superintendent reports.
All right, superintendent report. I'm going to have, Mrs. Croy's already here, and I'm not sure, Mrs. Johnson or Mr. Travis, there's some feedback we're getting, and I don't know if you might need a mute. It's pretty loud, so, you know, our boom mics will pick it up. It might be a little bit hard for friends at home. Thank you. We don't want you to just get out, you know. Couple of things that I want to just bring up in preface that we're not, you know, things change from the time that, you know, very quick announcements. One, just, you know, referendum update. One of the things I want to do is just really, you know, for the public, folks out home, and then for you as board members, you know, just one reminder I think needs to be made. You have a strategy, and your strategy was that above and beyond, elections are the best type of survey. Everybody who's, you know, 18 or over can participate in that survey. Everybody can vote their conscience, and that's how we decide things, you know, and ultimately, no matter what, there'll be a good outcome tomorrow, because it'll be a democratic process for people to weigh in, to give you direction, and that direction is coming from the citizens rather than from you. And I just, you know, want to remind our public, want to remind you, that at the beginning of this journey, you weighed, should you advance a Plan B, as Mrs. Hayes said, and just decide that Plan B, or should you engage a citizens committee, do some research, and ultimately go to the electorate and ask the electorate, what is it that you want to do, and then you'll follow that lead? And that's ultimately what we do in a democracy. A second part of that on the referendum is I just really want to thank all those people who have really engaged, have been in online forums, have come to tours, who have come to community conversations, have engaged, you know, gone the distance to be present and be in conversations. And more than anything else, my clarion call as a public servant is just how important it is for people to talk to each other face-to-face. The power of a conversation and the give and take that actually happens when that's happening, you know. Kudos to many of our staff last week. We had another very large group of people, and 45 minutes of that was that face-to-face conversation. Mr. Kundari, Dr. Green, and Dr. Huntington led that. At this point, we've had almost 900 people go through the building and jump into that face-to-face conversation. Just so, so, I think, important, you know, for us in any kind of democratic process. Couple other quick announcements. We have registered you, you as board members, within a year. We've registered you. I'll get you more details online for your IASB trauma-informed practices, training. So, I'll get you that information, you know, through your weekly board update. We're hosting, we've been asked for our work with equal opportunity schools, April 10th, we're hosting an equal opportunity schools showcase of schools here on April that morning. All board members can attend. If you attend a professional development institute, much like III, Open Meetings Act is different. You're not sitting down at a table meeting. You're participating in organized sessions. So, please let me know. I'll be telling you about that. The SAT and ACT, the rumor has it that the state of Illinois, the lowest responsible bidder for state accountability testing is the ACT. It's a rumor out there. The state board is meeting this week.
Wait, what does that mean exactly?
That means that we've been doing the SAT for a number of years now, and that next year, we might have to switch horses.
Again?
Again. Dr. McBride doesn't know how many iterations I've been through. ACT is a great product, SAT is a great product, but all of our work, all of our practice, all of the things that we've been doing for many, many years are preparing students for the SAT, not the ACT. They are different tests with different norm referencing too. So, stay tuned. This weekend, Saturday night in Milwaukee, both off the record and Vocal Point, our acapella choir is going to be competing at the Great Lakes Regional. Pretty cool. We've got a, I want to go with a youth US senator here.
Yes.
It was Chelsea Osay in Washington last week, was one of two Illinoisans of her age nominated to spend the week in Washington as a youth senator, hobnobbing with senators, shaking the hand of the President of the United States. That's a pretty amazing thing, right? So, congratulations to Ms. Osay. And then, is it Saturday, Mr. Dusterhoff, Friday? What do you?
Friday morning at 8:25.
Friday morning at 8:25, a first for this district is about to happen, your first district-sponsored overseas field trip. I believe Ms. Osay is going on that trip. A service trip, going to get a lot of service hours, to the Dominican Republic. And I really want to thank Mr. Dusterhoff, who is going to serve as our administrative chaperone on that trip. So, he's giving up his spring break, time away from his family to be on that trip. I think it'll be a life changer. That's been my experience with youth travel. Sorry to sobriquet those and put those in advance. So, let's dive in, just a couple of other things. Student school board member applications, we are going to get into that. Thank you to our student board members who did a presentation last week. I am going to ask you and work out with our billing administrators some compass periods over the next couple of weeks, because we're proposing, and I'll talk to board members when we have more time, April 19th, that those applications are due, to get on to a schedule that you could appoint your student board members for next year before the school year ends. So, thank you. I talked about final efforts to provide information to the public. Want to really shout out Mr. Slager, Janine Wheeler, and Ms. Grace Gonzalez, been superb in trying to do whatever they could to get information to the public. We don't want anybody to wake up on March 20th and not know what happened, that there was even an issue with the, you know, the high stakes that Mrs. Hayes mentioned. We absolutely would want, as a district, for people to know what's afoot, what's happening, what's going on. And then I'm going to turn it over really to staffing. I want to preface this, we bring this to you annually down agenda, you approve it. There is, you know, a memo. We've gone through a whole process that's going to be described in a moment here about how we try to fulfill the needs of our students. One thing for all board members, there are different strategies that districts bring to this. The strategy of this board so far, and this is only licensed staffing classes that we're talking about primarily, the approach of this board has been, we take requests from students. Those requests have continued to go up, up and up, their needs. We create, we section, and we create sections of classes to respond to those needs. We bring those needs to you, and then we use strategies to have some financial controls on those needs. For example, you'll hear from Mrs. Croy and Mr. Kundari that year after year, as, there's no other way to put it, more veteran and more expensive staff members retire. We replace those staff members with less experienced people, unless we have to in certain places, in order to dampen down the costs of new staff. That is not the way that every board does it. You're highly responsive to student needs. If there is a time when you want to look at different ways of staffing, for example, in my two previous districts, we reverse that. We were just simply given an FTE target, regardless of student need. Here's your FTE target. Make that happen. That oftentimes involved cutting classes, canceling classes, and riffing, reduction in force of teachers. That's another, that is another way. I think the process that you have right now will illuminate how that has controlled costs of staff, even when we're adding staff members and is responsive to student needs. I listed down below some exploding needs that we're still working with the union, trying to figure out. English language learners, dual credit, advanced placement, faith slot in human resources, this has really added quite a bit of work, new regulation in Title IX, discipline in terms of restorative practices, credit recovery and student support, athletics, we have increasing demands as we continue to see that grow. The IHSA is adding sports, good for kids, girls' flag football, and then just mental health support for students, still in need. Mr. Kundari, I'm going to turn this over to you and chime in when requested to do so.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for the time to talk during Dr. McBride's report. Each year, right around January, as we start thinking of, oh, second semester, it's time to wind down a little bit, that's when things really ramp up in our offices for hiring for the next school year. I know that sounds, you know, strange for some people, but that's really when we start going forward. So, what I'm going to do a little bit with Stephanie's assistance, is just kind of go through like a summary of our process, kind of go through some information, especially for those of you that maybe haven't gone through, how we get to this point, some modifications we made to the actual hiring process last year, and then just some historical and financial data that Stephanie will go over, just to kind of explain how, again, how we get to this point and where we go from here. Before we dive into some of those, just a few terms that you may hear me say, that you may say, well, what does that mean? First of all, an FTE is a full-time teaching equivalent. That's a teaching position, okay? So, if you hear me say we need X number of FTEs, that's what that means. We need that many teachers, okay? A PEL or a PEL, you may hear me use that phrase, that's a professional educator license. All the teachers, administrators have a professional educator license. That's what we earn when we go to school. The state says, okay, here's your license, okay? So, all of us have a PEL, a PEL, or an ELS, which is an educator license with stipulations, okay? Multi-endorse teachers, you'll hear me say that a few times during the presentation. That just means, what can we teach? What did we go to school? What endorsement do we have on our teaching license? Dr. Green has a social studies endorsement. I have an English endorsement. Mrs. Kishline has a business endorsement, okay? So, we all have different endorsements that we have that allow us to teach certain classes. We always look for multi-endorse teachers. I believe, Dr. Green, you have chemistry and biology or just chemistry? Chemistry and biology, which opens up a whole world of what can she teach if she were a science teacher, okay? And then the phrase sectioning. Dr. McBride alluded to that. Sectioning is this entire process of creating the opportunities for the students to say, these are the classes that we want, that we want to take, okay? Can you, as a district, as our administration, can you put this together so that the students can take the courses that they request, okay? All right. So, a quick summary of the process. Again, we start in January, February, and it's a team effort for sure, okay? That's when student course selections begin. The guidance counselors meet with the students. Teachers talk with the students. The administrators talk with the students. And then through January, February, the counselors, the administrators talk about, okay, let's take a look at these courses. How many of How many of these sections do we need? How many total sections of math do we need for all thirty-eight hundred of our students? We put that all together by about February first. My office publishes positions, opening, anticipated openings based on retirements or based on resignations that we have up to that point. So, this past February first, we knew a biology teacher is retiring, a French teacher is retiring, a speech pathologist is retiring, and a special education teacher is retiring. So, we knew those were some anticipated positions. I also had a letter of resignation from a social studies teacher and from a dean. So, we were able to post those anticipated, which means there's a good chance we'll be filling those positions based on the sections we have. March first is when we all sit together. The administrators, after going through the sections, we sit down, we talk to each other. We go department by department, class by class, building and building to really see how many courses, how many sections of each course we need, okay? Which brings us to today, okay? And after we get to that point, we get to today, and this is when I come to you and say, here's what, after doing all that, has come to, these are how many sections we need, these are how many teachers we need, okay? Any questions on that? I'm gonna pause there for a second. Anything that I've said that is out of, no? Okay. Okay. So, as I mentioned, we have, we had five total teachers retiring this year. Mr. Starkey retired in December. And the board had allowed us to hire his replacement over the fall so that there could be some job shadowing. We've had three teachers thus far who have resigned for next school year. And we really took a look at student enrollment. If you remember, two years ago, Jerry McKibben came in. He did a enrollment study. And last year, he was within six students, if I remember correctly, right on. This year, he's within twenty students. So, actually, it's really close, you know, in a school district of thirty-eight hundred, twenty kids difference is not that.
Well, and as those projections go, the further out you go from the time you gather the data, the little bit more statistical room you've gotta give, right? I also have the projection that I do in the treasures report as well, which they're all fairly aligned, so.
The other thing, I look towards our teacher leave of absences. If a teacher's going out on family medical leave or a childcare leave, I have to look at that to replace that teacher as well. So, of course, there are lots of financial considerations. Again, team concept for candidate review. We look at candidates, as Dr. McBride mentioned earlier. We look at the candidates. We don't necessarily look for people who have twenty-five or thirty years of experience to replace someone who's leaving with thirty years' experience. We kinda look at the financial aspect of, you know, we wanna look at teachers that maybe don't have the same number of years or substantially fewer number of years. Stephanie and I, Stephanie and I then sit together. We put a spreadsheet together. And we put a giant list together of all of the staff that are leaving, their positions, their current salaries. And then, we kinda total it up. We kinda use that as our basis of, that's our line. That's our line. We don't wanna go above that line, okay? Again, it could depend on the year. There was one year that Stephanie will show you in a few minutes where I know we replaced counselors, we replaced deans, and those positions by the nature of the position must have a master's degree, must have years of experience in education. So, those positions definitely a little bit higher. We do have to replace a dean this year. In my thought process, as we're going through, that will be a position that will probably be a higher-paying position than a teacher first year out of college. We need a speech pathologist this year. Again, looking at candidates with experience to help in that area. And Dr. Huntington's been working on that.
So, as Mr. Kundari points out, the way we put together, so we know the anticipated, we start that list, and we, as he's going through the hiring process and as our departments and administration are starting to fill those positions, we kinda keep track of where we're filling them in, right? And that way, we know when we get down to, oh, we need a new math teacher because someone left, or we need a social studies teacher or a French teacher. Can we find one that might be a newer teacher in areas where it might be possible to do that? Because we know we're filling in some of these other more expensive positions just by the nature, right? And then, there are some years too where we need like a niche teacher, right? Like somebody who teaches only one thing, they're hard to find, might have to pay up for, right? Like those kinds of things. We usually try to fill those as early as we can, and that leaves us room. You know, it's kind of an ongoing process to look at the list and see where we can manage and potentially balance it out and hire additional staff if needed within the same amount that we were paying the previous year, you know? So, sorry.
So, again, for review, we look at teacher licenses and their endorsements, okay? Hopefully, get a multi-endorse candidate. We look at the candidates themselves, diversity of thought, background, language, cultures, and experiences. We look at their interests. What can they help us with regards to co-curriculars and coaching? But one of the things that we really look at are those salaries. We look at, here's the total number of dollars that are leaving with the staff who are resigning or retiring. And this is kind of our budget. It's kinda what we look at to see where they fall. And then, I have discussions with the department chairs, with the building principals, Dr. Huntington. And we talk about, you know you have a few positions to fill. Let's really take a look. Let's really find those people that could fit within this.
And have a balance, have a balance of trying to find the best teachers for reasonable cost, right?
Hiring process, we revamped it quite a bit last year. Kind of made some different tiers. So, after the positions are posted, when we close the posting, the principals and the department chairs, sometimes other staff members in the department, will go through screening. They will go through a screening process, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty minutes with a whole bunch of the candidates just to get an idea of who they are. Our big question or our big direction to those candidates is, make your resume come alive. This is it. You've got fifteen minutes. Why should we consider you for a position in our district? From there, it's narrowed down. It could be, it could be three depending on candidates. It could be six. It could be eight. Could be up to, you know, up to ten. But then, that's where panels start coming into play. Principals and department chairs and other teachers in the department or other departments. Maybe a dean, maybe a guidance counselor. It could be a secretary. It could be a paraprofessional. It could be a, someone on the facility staff who comes in and, or it could be students. It could be parents who come in. And we put panels together to really get a feeling for what people are really looking for in staff and in teachers. I know some students, have you guys sat on panels before? Yeah. So, just different experiences. And then, if need be, if we get down to maybe two or three, we have them come in again, and we do the same type of process. That's not to say that we can't fast-track some candidates. If we know it's a really hard-to-fill position, maybe like a fax position or a position where we know there's just a shortage of candidates, we may fast-track that and say, you know what? Let's get some people and let's get those interviews done a lot quicker. Because we don't wanna lose out on a candidate because of the process.
Yeah, and that's not to say that there won't still be a process. There's still a process. It just may not involve quite as many people, right?
So, like around, you guys just skipped around two. There's really only three people who apply that are qualified for it?
Could be, yes.
You can, yeah, there's many ways to adjust the process to make it quicker, but yeah, that's an option, yeah.
So, after they go through the process, the administrators, the department chairs talk about their finalists. They give me a call. They say, hey, where are we on our budget? Where can we fit in? How many years' experience can we have? We found this really great candidate, but they have eight years' experience, but this other great candidate maybe has three. With, you know, they start thinking about where we can fit those candidates in, okay? And at that point, that's when we make our offer. Pause again. Any questions on any of that moving forward? Okay. All right. Quick overviews, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, maybe just a few comments about each one to kinda just talk about our departments and where we sit right now. First of all, in world languages and cultures, we do need to replace a French teacher. Ideally, we'd love a French and Spanish multi-endorse person. It's a unicorn right now. We're trying. We're looking everywhere for that. We may have to get creative with some schedules with the current staff, but that's definitely one area we need.
But we already have one. So, we're talking about a second one, right? Don't we have a French-Spanish teacher?
We are in need of replacing a French teacher. And so, with the courses that the student selected, it would be like three French classes and two Spanish classes. So, we would have to, if we can't find someone who's dual-certified like that, who's multi-endorse, we would have to get creative within our, the staff we already have. And maybe just hire a French teacher and not a French-Spanish teacher. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Also, in world languages and cultures, we've shifted the bilingual program into that department. The board approved a position in January for the bilingual based on numbers. If you can go to the next slide, Dr. or Dr. McBride, you can see where our numbers have increased in bilingual and EL services over the course of the last three years. Again, these are based on testing and how many students are actually taking advantage of the program. We have two, we'll have two staff that cover most of these classes. And then, there are some teachers from other departments that will be teaching a few sections to try and cover. Again, that's where the multi-endorse staff numbers come into play. In social studies, we had posted that position as anticipated. It turns out, we will not need to fill that position based on numbers and sections. So, that is one position that we won't have to fill. In math, there's a teacher who's resigning, so we're gonna, we'll need to replace that teacher. A dean is resigning. She's moving on to take an administrative position, so we'll need to replace that position. Guidance, we had two counselors, positions approved by the board. So, we're in the process of completing that. No changes to PE teachers. No changes at this time to visual and performing arts that I have. Special education, we looked at the needs of the students. We do need to replace a retiring teacher, and we do need to replace the retiring speech pathologist. We also have a leave of absence in that department for a semester. She'll be out for a semester on childcare leave. College and career applications, we put this together a week ago. I have received another letter of resignation for a staff member, and then, we'll need to fill in a leave of absence for one of those teachers. Science, we have a retiring biology teacher. We have another biology teacher that will be out on childcare leave. And then, we need to replace a chemistry teacher who has resigned, okay? In English, at this time, there's no changes to the number of staff. We are looking to post the English department chair position as our English department chair stepped down last month. Overall, and our overall, there's an increase in sections. And I wanna stop just for one second, just to talk about the increase in sections. That's the total number of sections that the students have requested courses in or that we've identified we need courses. A majority of those sections are for the bilingual program that has increased. There are specific numbers there. Also, special education, okay? As an aside, every FTE, go back to that, full-time teaching equivalent, every FTE equals ten sections, okay? Every FTE equals ten sections. If you think about five classes a day, first period, first and second semester, second period, first and second semester, goes to those ten sections, okay? So, that's how we get up to twenty-seven hundred sections. Overall, based on the three positions that were approved by the board in January, minus one for the social studies position, we would be at two-hundred-and-seventy-two FTE for next year, okay? Which is just an increase of two. If you've looked historically over the last few years, we had some bigger numbers, and now, those numbers are starting to level off, which is what we assumed would happen with our student population kinda leveling off as well.
So, now, we're gonna shift to a spreadsheet.
I have a question.
Question, yep.
Mr. Kundari, I know a few years back, there was a shortage of teachers or positions in certain areas. Do you anticipate having, seeing some of those?
We are, we are. Having gone to a few recruitment fairs in the past few weeks, Dr. Green and Dr. Green, several of us were there. There's a plethora of certain areas. There's a definite shortage in the STEM area. So, a lot of the science, math shortages. There's gonna be a battle among districts to try and recruit those teachers just because there's a shortage in those areas. Special education, shortage. A lot of the specialty areas, speech, psychologists. A lot of, there's a shortage in schools. There's a shortage of school nurses, certified school nurses in the state of Illinois. So, yes, there are quite a few areas where I wish colleges would be pushing, you know, hey, I wanna be a teacher. Great, be a science teacher. Great, be a math teacher. We really need those right now.
Do you have a sense for whether or not the STEM shortage is, given its rise in interest just by general educational moments of it? Is it a shortage that's because there are more opportunities or a shortage of number of students going into those disciplines?
It's the shortage of students going into education. They're taking the STEM courses. They're going to college for computers, for science, for those things. But they're going out and not taking the education courses they need. Coming back, if there is a shortage, it's always something that they can go back to. The state has made it. There are several programs around the state of Illinois. We have one teacher in our special education department who's student teaching while she's getting her license through Western Illinois. And she's a phenomenal teacher, so. Okay, Steph.
Okay. A lot of words. Now, we're gonna look at the numbers. So, this is just a summary and illustration of the totals of what our history is for the last five years. So, over the last five years, we have, we have actually increased twenty-three positions. But we've done that with less money. And the reason we've been able to do that is all the things that Mr. Kundari talked about, right? In areas where the sectioning allowed us to not replace retirees, we did that. And in some of those cases, that allowed us to almost hire two staff members depending on how veteran the teacher was, right? How many years the teacher had been here. And then, how, you know, whether we were able to hire, you know, bachelor step-one teachers or not, right? So, in those instances, that allowed us to grow in 2020 by ten, well, nine net. In 2021, ten net. And then, in 2022, just a couple more. And then, six more, you know, six more, and then, five more again. So, and what you're seeing here is you're seeing the total number of positions added, then how many resignations we didn't fill, and then replacements we did fill, right? So, I'm showing kind of all those breakdown pieces. And so, then, you can see the costs of those things as well. So, cost savings of positions replaced and as well as the costs of the ones we didn't replace or new positions. All of those pieces are kinda separated out for you. And you'll see in the year that Mr. Kundari talked about where we did have to hire some more expensive positions, you see we have two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand. you see we have $243,000, right? So this is just an illustration, like this is the bottom line, but we have a whole listing of people that is above those totals, right? That we're kind of keeping track of those puzzle pieces as we go through the hiring season. Any questions on how that works? I mean, I thought it might be easiest to see some of those totals. It's really amazing that we were able to hire that many people and not really have a million dollars in new cost, so.
And this is the end outcome, you know, when I began this conversation, just strategy, how you're going to direct us to hire. I think that's where that strategy pays off because those additional positions are the result of additional student requests, new courses that we've added. We made a concerted effort to have students take three years of science because of its impact on student achievement, math plus, science plus, E L L. All of those kind of additional course offerings and enrollments end up with a larger staff. But on the back end of it, rather than sort of managing that on the front end, saying, here's an artificial, you know, target to hit, we manage it on the back end, over-under, to try to control it by who we hire. You might get second choice, but not second rate. It's sometimes what we try to tell our department chair.
And I personally feel that this puts the control of that kind of where it belongs, right? Like my job and Tony's job is to hire the process of hiring and the money of hiring. That's really kind of our job, where it's the building staff's job to select the right people and say their need, right? Like it's their job to say, our department needs this. Then it's my job to figure out how we can make that happen within the budget, right? So it really doesn't push, you know, the control of that money onto people who it's not their role to do that, right? They can focus on the educational needs, and my office can focus on money, right? Dr. McBride, if you'll flip to the next slide, please. So we don't have those bottom-line numbers yet because obviously we're just at the beginning of the hiring. We've got a spreadsheet started with some of these pieces. We know, here's the totals of the people that are leaving. We know what those look like. And we do know what a few of the potential hires will be as they've started filling some of them. But we, not having those totals yet, I couldn't really show you where we're at for this year. That's why I did the historical piece. But the process will be the same. We're going to look for, you know, here's the totals that we were removing and what can we put into the process. And again, as Tony said, we do consider the enrollment and where they came from. You know, that's just pointing out where they came from in our process as well. Any more questions on that?
So here's where we are. So here's the final slide, the last word. So we added the three full-time teaching equivalents in January, the five retirees, the three, no, four resignations, one social studies position not replaced. We have five either full-year or semester leave of absence. Currently, knowing all those, the cost of retirements and resignations as of right now is about $838,000. We don't know the replacement cost yet, okay? We don't know who, you know, who's going to come in. I've been working with the principals, talking with the department chairs, talking with Dr. Huntington, really going through as they're doing, conducting their interviews, where are we going to end up? And it may come down to, come May, come June, as we're looking at these numbers, and they say, hey, I've got a really great candidate at step-five, a really great candidate at step-one. I may have to say, based on our numbers, where we are, we've got to go with that first-year teacher just because we need to be in that. We want to try and stay in our budget.
When you say cost, is that savings? Because those are dollars that you no longer would need to pay?
That's, yeah. So in my spreadsheet, that would be the part that we're subtracting and then we're adding. That's, yes, that's the cost from the prior year, yeah.
So as we hire people, we want to keep it below that 838 as much as we can.
But for this year, it's savings?
For?
Because it represents money that we would not need to pay?
Correct.
And then the cost is then the replacement cost for those that we would hire?
Yeah.
Correct.
It's not netted out here because we don't know that until yet. And honestly, as Tony pointed out, he had three resignations, now we have four. It also might go up a little bit, right? As we have a few more people that might decide to, you know, hold on to other things, so.
Any other questions?
And later in the approval section, action items, we actually, this is all reduced to a memo that you approved. The importance of it is it now begins as we've been doing interviewing, we've been working with candidates. But what it authorizes us to do is to start filling those licensed staff positions. You know, so ultimately, we want to be competitive. We have other districts, like Tony said, that are competing against us for candidates. So want to make sure before you get to the approval item that we're as thorough as possible. And I think again, for the public, the most important thing is understanding that as we add staff, we're not necessarily adding extravagant dollars. That's probably kind of the punchline.
Living within our.
Right.
One other quick question. How does the 838 relate to other years? Sorry, I didn't remember what those numbers were.
That's a little low right now, but again, it's not, we're not done, right? So, Dr. McBride, if you flip back to the spreadsheet? Thank you. You see how the previous-year costs of the positions being replaced, right? That's really this top line. So see, a couple of them were lower, but it really depends on how many people are leading that year.
So not, not out of the ordinary?
No, no, it'll probably end up a million by the time.
How would we less than average?
Yeah.
Probably a little less than average.
But there were some years there where we had eight teachers retiring, right? There's less than that this year.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
I have a question about the list that is presented.
I have a question, I might have a new topic.
Oh, can you hang on, Ms. Johnson? Ms. Ose was just in the middle of asking a question. You might not have heard her.
Okay.
We'll get her question, and then how about we get your question? Hang on one second. Yeah, Ms. Ose.
It's a different question, so if.
Is it related to staffing, or?
It's related to the list that you have on, under the superintendent's report, so if.
Oh, the list of items.
The E L L, that list.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, why don't we take this question? I know which list you're talking about. Yeah, Ms. Johnson, your question.
Guidance counselor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we approved to have one extra, two extra guidance counselor.
Uh, two.
Two.
Did one of those replace a retiring guidance counselor, or?
No.
Two new positions?
Those are two brand-new positions to bring those guidance counselor loads across the board below 300 per school counselor.
Okay. And then, because we do have, how many we have retiring?
The school counselors? We have no school counselors retiring this year.
Okay, that's in the next three years. Okay, that's on Kathy Fielder.
Right, that's in, you know, I think that's 2026. I believe she'll be retiring.
She's going in 27.
28, all right.
Okay. So we'll be in the process of looking to field.
We will be, we will be, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. That's my question.
Got it, great. Hey, thanks. And then, Ms. Ose, your question about this list. Yeah, go ahead.
I had a question about Title IX, especially coming back from DC. I think that, like, there's a lot of students that are just really interested in Title IX and emphasizing, like, the importance of it within schools. I just wanted to know, especially seeing within our state, seeing a lot of top universities getting in trouble with Title IX, if we're open to having more conversations around, like, gender-affirming care and also just safe and non-safe touches? I think Tori can agree with me that, like, Aaron's Law is great, but it's one of the only times in our school year that we're talking about safe and unsafe touches. And we can expand these conversations into our athletic departments, into our health classes, but we're not necessarily doing that. And this education and this opportunity to spread this conversation could help, like, so many students along their careers, so.
Right. And what you're doing, Ms. Ose, is sort of that anticipates that work because just for the public, for the board, the board knows this, that Title IX oftentimes was thought of as gender equity and resources. Specifically, it got boxed into sports or in classwork to make sure that boards of education were equally endowing, you know, along generality. You're spot on. Title IX in 2020 was revised to deal with many, many different levels of sexual harassment in the school place or any place where Title IX applies. So exactly, this anticipates those type of needs, right? Training students, training staff, creating awareness. What is Title IX, what isn't Title IX? How do you decide what's Title IX? What kind of investigations do we have to do? The bar is far, far higher, higher with Title IX and sexual harassment, just as a general, and you're right on it, right? Yep?
So are we open to, like, having, you know, conversations about putting in more, like, probably curriculum to talking about, like, Title IX?
Yeah, we don't really have a choice. You know, it's a regulation, and what this is doing is for the board, there's a cost associated with that, right? That we really can't ignore because it is the law, right? You know, so this anticipates, all that work's got to get done, right?
Are you asking if it's going to be integrated into classes or if it's going to be separated classes? That gives the student an opportunity to take that class about that subject.
I would definitely love to see it integrated within classes just so more students have that opportunity to learn more about where they can go to, like, what is appropriate and what is not appropriate, just so we can explore different options to.
Yeah, and that's typically like faith laws formally taught, like in health, in honors health. That's where it would likely be located curricularly. You could also bring it in sort of in social studies, government as well. But then also, you have to do a whole layer in terms of compass, home port. Really, Title IX, to your point, Ms. Ose, almost has to be as ubiquitous as what we do with, for example, lockdown drills, right? You know, everybody needs to know what's the scope, what's the, what is Title IX? Like you said, what's appropriate, what's inappropriate? So all of that training has to be lots of different, lots of different layers for students, not just formally in class. I think you're imagining conversations happening in a lot of different formats. So you're exactly right. It's a lot of work. And unfortunately, in this, what we're talking about right now is the cost of that work, right? You're bringing folks in, you're doing that training, who does that training, right? So these are just all things that we're seeing exploding in terms of needs, you know, that the board will have to be responsive to. So the answer is yes.
Hey, we can enter, machine reports, curriculum report.
Do you, do you want to take a break? Do you need to take a break at all, or you're?
Can I just run to the restroom really quick?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want, like, I was just sort of anticipating. It's 9:30, it's usually when we're wrapping up. We've got a good amount of things. Do you want to take maybe a two or three minutes, or?
Yeah, that's fine, sorry, you can do that.
All right, yeah. All right, yeah.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
So I am continuing what we started working on last month, was going through part of the Equal Opportunity Schools Equity Pathways Report. And I will honor your time and try to be a little bit shorter this evening. Um, but last month, uh I looked at um kinda who took the survey and what were those students who took the survey, what did they see in their future? Another aspect we're using the report for is what do we need need to know about our students in order to recruit them for AP and dual credit classes? So, yeah, Dr. McBride, if you wanna open it up, I'll just remind you that on uh report number two and three, we see that, you know, um approximately eighty percent of our students want to go to a two or four-year school. So we wanna support them in that. So then I'm gonna have Dr. McBride jump to report number six. So when you start having conversations with students, it's kind of important for for us to know what do teachers think are is important about AP and dual credit classes and what do students think they're enrolling in? And so you can kinda see here, teachers think that when students take these classes, they're developing critical thinking skills, they're having college-like experiences, and they're growing their mindset, meaning growth mindset, they're getting grit, they're getting perseverance, they're getting that idea that you might not get it at first, but if you keep trying, you're gonna get it. Um, they're developing study skills. Those are the top four by teachers. But students, on the other hand, they think they're signing up because, one, they're gonna earn college credit. They think it might help them access college. They think they're gonna get a GPA bump. And they also think they're getting a college-like experience. So you can see there's a little bit of a difference um when you're trying to sell students who haven't gone in classes like this before, like really what what the benefits are of taking the class. Slide, report number eight, just reviews what those mindsets are. Yeah, things like um academic identity, that's the student's sense of their own self-confidence in taking the class. Focus, I think we all know what focus is, I don't have to explain that one. Um, this idea of grit, if I keep working at it, I'm gonna get it. These are important. And then I'll have Dr. McBride go to um report number nine, or graph number nine as part of this report. So we told you this and E O S shared this with you on the front end, on the national norm. Teachers say the number one thing, right, is give me kids who are motivated to learn and I can get any of them there. And guess what? Our staff also said, if a student is motivated, they're gonna persevere and they have interest in my class, they can do it. That's a very different uh mindset than what students think they need to go into a class. So all of this is to say is, this would be part of what the conversations have included when our counselors have been talking with our students or teachers, and there's continuing work with the trusted adults that our students identified um with having conversations. Any questions on that part? All right, I'll be back next month with a little, we'll wrap it up.
Great, thank you. Principal reports. That's okay.
Good evening. Um, as you can see in the report, um spring sports have kicked off and have gotten underway as as long, or as well as our activities. Um, spring break is next week, and so the staff and students are really looking forward to that. And by the time we get back, it's going to be April. So before you know it, um summer will be here. So we're doing a lot of planning for summer activities. So some of the events that did take place at Central over the summer, uh like we, I mentioned to you about Fresh Start, we're gonna move that over here to East Campus for sure. Uh, and that will start on June fourth, um but we will run it condensed. So we'll do it a two-week period. Here, we will also offer Fresh Start Plus to really try to connect and engage some of the kids that um our feeder schools have identified that really need an extra um connection here.
I'll stay on the theme of looking to next year. Um, as Carrie had mentioned, Fresh Start, uh summer school sessions are open for registration by going to the L T H S website. Um, also staying on the theme of next year, a little bit of uh Mr. Candari and Ms. Croy's report about our hiring process. As we have really, um several of us of our administrative team, staff members involving students have been rolling already with interviewing for next year and 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 some some positions that we have offered. We we still have some more on the horizon, but we have really been working hard on that now and 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 will continue to as we go into April. Um, our students really started the course selection process going back to December this particular school year, and that's coming to a close as well, as we're gonna be wrapping up by the end of this month. Um, everything going into the sectioning process that uh Mr. Candari and Ms. Croy talked about. Another thing, thinking of next year, our seniors with um the opportunity to earn scholarships for for next year. We continue to try to encourage our seniors um to go to their school, looks account, to look at the several community uh and foundation scholarship opportunities that we've had, um that we that we currently have, I should say. Um, I've included it on the Sunday message. We wanna continue to encourage that because there is, there are a lot of scholarship opportunities available for our seniors. Um, so yeah, we are also very much looking forward to spring break. It is hard to believe a little bit that uh when we return, it will be in April and we'll be going on the last two months of um of the school year and our seniors wrapping up their high school career.
Do you have any questions of us? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and we have those two overnight.
Yeah, two overnight field trips, just to inform the board, that's this weekend, Winter Guard is going to Midwest competition. And then this weekend, Vocal Point off the record, heading up to great city of Milwaukee to compete, so doing great things.
Moving on, the maintenance report.
The maintenance report, you know, it's always, um, you know, uh, Mr. Thompson can highlight anything, anything. Um, we are, you know, I think the highlight of this is we are full in demolition at um at at Central, it is it is happening. Um, and that is the demolition phase, the easier phase of this is is moving a pace. Uh, today, we met with our um structural engineers, they're gonna be on site for the first time tomorrow. Third floor is done, they're coming in, they're gonna do that visual inspection phase, they'll be doing that as the demolition occurs. So when one floor is demolished, they'll, you know, uh be on the third floor looking up into spaces, making that ver- that structural um engineering visual inspection. Keep out of working, W J E is also on site through this demolition, you might recall. We um had them do additional soundings, the the uh report last month. There are some additional rooms that they would recommend that we add to the scope of the work that we're doing. Um, and we're we're adding that, um, you know, just because as they've done sounding, they would put them in that sort of moderate um risk. It's not, you know, hundreds of rooms, but we wanna take care of all of those. Um, you know, we're um very much now, it's spring uh season, so athletics, fields, courts um have to be in good shape. Um, and uh Mr. Thompson's crew is doing that. And then you can see we've done, you know, domestic cold water repair, hot chi- um, you know, water coils, trim trees. Hot water storage tank was replaced at uh Central Campus. It's kind of the big type of, you know, hot water tank that that we need to get certified in. Uh, interesting note from, you know, Mi- Mr. Thompson, you know, suggested, um, if you take a look, the boiler inspector suggested going through all the necessary calculations, paperwork, and cost to get an unidentified tank certified, the best decision would be to install a new one because all of the identification of that tank, you know, it's it's so old, it's all gone. Um, so recommended, um, you know, a replacement. So uh that new hot water tank was was, you know.
Like the side, like its identity code is just gone?
Yeah, it's just.
So old.
Right, so.
Well, thank you.
You know, any any questions for Mr. Thompson, myself?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right. Okay, moving on to consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number twenty-two?
Still moved?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by uh Mr. Tease. Any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
Mr. Travis. Mr. Travis.
Probably got cut off.
Are they muted?
No, you know what, they probably.
I don't know. Uh, Ms. Johnson, are you still with us?
Yes.
I thought I just heard Mr. Travis in there. Yeah, Mi- Mr. Travis, I don't know if you can hear us. All right. Um, Mr. Tease.
Yes.
Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
There's Travis, there's my.
Yeah, we can barely hear you, Mr. Travis. We're taking vote on consent agenda. Heard you for a second, that we that we lost you. Uh, Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
And Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, okay. Next, we move on to our action consideration. Do I have a motion to approve the full-time custodian position?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Navarro.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Travis. Mr. Tease.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five licensed personnel staffing?
Still moved.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Mr. Tease. All right, I'm sure they, we answered, we got all our questions answered from that presentation, so I'll just do a roll call.
Uh, Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tease.
Yes.
Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Travis.
Yes.
Got it. Uh, Ms. Lopez Caniva.
Yes.
Uh, did I get you, Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, I thought I did. And Ms. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, next, we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with D L A for ceiling replacement at Central Campus Phase Two. Can you make that motion?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caniva and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions?
Just one. Um, I had asked Dr. McBride if he had any additional information as far as what the scope was related to this particular um effort. So I wanted to see if he was able to ascertain any.
I did, and I I know we don't usually do paper, but I have paper for you. I emailed this afternoon. Uh, just received a um a letter from D L A Architects, and it d- details, um, it bumps out in that memorandum of understanding. I'll open up the memorandum of understanding here. Um, I hope, I'm not on the memorandum of understanding, I'm on something else. On this memorandum of understanding, um, just, you know, request for some additional information in terms of scope. I also included just the uh the Capital Development Board, its uh most recent centralized fee negotiations, just kinda give you, there's a scale here of professional fees. But I know you're just seeing this right now, so let me summarize um, you know, what this this memo talks about in terms of scope, and I'll kind of summarize as I read it. You know, what does, I think Mr. Tease's question is, that nine percent of total construction costs, what does that fee entail? What what is D L A doing? And and this is for the ceiling restoration, replacing the ceiling. We've already approved the demolition. So doing a couple things. Uh, just first, a planning stage um is is part of this scope. That includes communication with W J E, P's and Bors, uh structural engineers, uh planning with us. Um, also planning will we be going for a uh more permanent solution to those ceilings or a more temporary solution? We've asked D L A to dial up both. That's contingent to a certain extent on the outcome of tomorrow, contingent on um structural engineering analysis uh as well. So there's that 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 planning stage. Then there's a concept design stage, which, you know, putting the initial concept of the work into a drawing format, floor and ceiling plans, um includes reviews to determine if the concept is is the correct concept. Then a schematic and design development stage, more detailed drawings, once the concept is approved by us, pulling out any discrepancies, any additional work changes, like any requests, that when we get the structural engineering report, we could have some additional work that has to be folded in there. Then a construction in and document stage, that's creating all the detailed drawings for um uh construction com- companies, completing the necessary permitting, uh receiving the construction bids, leading um the construction bid uh process so that we can get uh a lowest responsible bidder to um the board. Bidding and negotiation services, one of the things that we've asked. Um, you know, that's notice, that's the bidding form, that's conducting the pre-bid meeting. But one of the things we we push D L A to do is to uh work with um construction companies that that will come in under budget. And we understand that when we ask that, you know, we anticipated dev- demolition would be as high as eight hundred thousand. The lowest responsible bidder might be off four hundred seventy-nine, four hundred sixty-eight thousand. But that also lowers D L A's fee as we push them to work with contractors who will be highly, highly competitive. They lead that process. Um, and then any kind of interviewing, conducting interviews with bidders, answering questions with bidders to finally get that, you know, to this space. And then obviously, and then any kind of construction administration services. That's overseeing the project, making sure the architectural plans are carried out, um, you know, as they should be. So that's, you know, without reading this out loud, and this came, you know, as a result of board member questions, so. I don't know if there's any questions related to that, but this kind of bumps out the scope. One of the things that we talked about, um, that Mr. Tease and I talked about a little bit today is sitting down, you know, using his expertise with D L A, talking about the memorandum of understanding process and perhaps expanding the scope of these memorandums, which you've been pretty typical with with D L A to include maybe a little bit more something like this that I'm holding in my hand, um, you know, for each project that they work on.
All right, so it's been um, it's been motioned and it's been seconded, so just a roll call.
Uh, Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Travis.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
Got you, Mr. Travis. Uh, Mr. Tease.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the press one-one-three policy updates as presented?
Still moved?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Are there any questions?
Now I do, you know, I can pull the slides up, I do want to just, there there is one policy in here related to student board members. It updates the decisions you made in the past year, it's not a press update. It's an update I'd recommend, you know, that our, you know, your policy previously had one Central Campus, one East Campus. You currently have four student board members, all seniors at East Campus. So this brings this, you know, into alignment, um, fully into alignment with your current practice.
All right. All right, roll call.
Jeez.
Yes.
Uh, and did we get a first and a second?
Yes, uh, Dr. Shaw and Dr. Simone Rogers.
Thanks, I'm falling down on my uh my my duties here.
I have your back.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
Mr. Travis.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Simone Rogers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, announcements.
All right, announcements. Uh, just a few announcements here, um, in case you haven't been paying attention. Uh, there's a thing called an election tomorrow.
There is?
I know, I know you're all gonna express your dismay and shock. Um, and again, you know, it's like I said, it's it's, I I believe in your strategy that it's the best way to serve a year. It's through their vote. Friday's beginning of spring break.
There's there's a feedback.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's Luann or Michael, we just have quite a bit of feedback. Um, so just wanna let you know, I I think if you muted before, it kinda went down. There you go. Um, uh, Friday is not only.
I think that was Michael.
Got it. We we heard you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, Friday is not only the beginning of spring break, it's also an early release. Uh, so just making board members aware, March twenty-third, acapella groups are competing. Tuesday, April second, classes resume. April fifteenth, that comes up quickly. Uh, our Board of Education meeting for April comes up very quickly, so just letting you know. And then April sixteenth and seventeenth is state accountability testing, a big deal for a lot of people. Um, you know, all of our students are engaged in that on one way or the other.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
All right, and if you, if you are a signatory, there's a few signatures we missed from February twentieth.